Okay, we're back in session and we're ready to take on item 9D. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, item 9D is a study session for the council. We have Fred Bedary and David Naum here this evening to give the council an update on what's been happening in relation to cannabis regulation and policy and to ask for some direction as we begin to move this process forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the purpose of this report is to conduct a study session on options for cannabis-related land use regulations. And at this time, the city's municipal code prohibits medical cannabis in Vacaville, so when the Land Use and Development Code was amended in 2011 to address this issue, medical cannabis was the only type of marijuana allowed in the state of California. However, new state legislation has been adopted that does allow a wider range of cannabis products. The state is developing regulations and licensing procedures for a variety of uses of cannabis listed on the screen here: cultivation, dispensing, retail sales, distribution, manufacturing, all of those activities. And all or most of these do fall within the range of land use regulation and cities throughout the state are now reviewing their codes to see what type of regulation or whether they wish to have regulations adopted for these products. The state's processes are defining specific uses with licensing regulations, but they are still also in the process of developing some of their licensing procedures. And so, we don't even know at this point all of the details of how this product will be regulated or available in the state. Also, just one other item to note, so when the state law was amended for cannabis, it did, starting in January of 2017, did allow personal, the cultivation of cannabis for personal use on private property. So, that law is already in effect in the state of California. So, at this time-
Is that indoors or outdoors or both?
That, I believe, is both: indoor and outdoor, on private property at this time. So, the city at this point has to decide how to regulate, and we've identified several options for your consideration. We're seeking your direction on which way to go, which type of ordinance, if any, to prepare for you. So, I'll talk first about the regulations related to commercial cannabis. That is now both medicinal and recreational use. The state's licensing procedures will become effective in January, and they're currently envisioning the 21 types of licenses. We've included in your packet a description of, I think, all of these 21 different types of licenses that the state envisions. The general categories for these licenses are shown on the screen here: cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, office uses related to the products, and retail sales of the products. Currently, with the law going into effect in January, the uses would be allowed where consistent with city zoning and in compliance with other limitations that are contained in the state law. So, for example, retail sales are prohibited within a certain distance of schools, parks, and daycare centers, but other than that, local zoning would be the way to determine whether a use was allowed. The map shown here on the screen shows you the distribution of non-residential zoning in the city, just to give you a sense of, say, commercial or manufacturing or warehousing types of locations. So, again, under the state law, because there are also locational criteria, not all of these areas would be potentially viable as locations for someone to open a business related to cannabis products, but this gives you a starting point. And we could map from there the impact of the separation from schools, parks, and daycare centers and things like that. But this was just to show that distribution of non-residential land use in the city. Personal products, again, at this point cultivation for personal use is permitted in the state. No state license is required for that activity. Cities are allowed, under the law, to prohibit outdoor cultivation at someone's, on a residential property or someone's private property. And then, breaking it down into a little more detail, so the personal recreational uses, again, effective, permitted, effective now. Cities cannot prohibit the indoor cultivation of this product for personal use, and there are certain limits on the amount of that set by the state law. For medical products, we believe the same situation will be in effect. The city would not be able to prohibit the indoor cultivation of those products. And under the state's anticipated licensing procedures, there will be procedures for licensed caregivers also, so it may be that someone is growing the plants at their house, but they're a licensed caregiver who's licensed to provide this to someone else who needs it for a medical use. So, that is just a quick overview of where the state legislation has ended up. Like I said, cities are, throughout the state, are now taking a look at their regulations, trying to decide whether they'd like to adopt ordinances to regulate this land use. January is the target date because at that point, the state law will go into effect otherwise. We've identified three potential options for the council's consideration and are asking for your direction on that. First, the city could decide to prohibit all cannabis activity to the extent allowed. So, to do that, we would need to have the council initiate an amendment to the Land Use and Development Code for that prohibition. It would prohibit both recreational and medical cannabis activities. The ordinance, we would anticipate returning to you by October with an ordinance of that type, so that it could go through the public hearing process and be effective before January 1st. And again, this type of an ordinance would not affect a person's ability to grow for their personal use at their own home. The second potential option, some cities are considering regulating some cannabis-related land use activities to allow certain types of uses. In this case, if the council were to like the city staff to look at that option, we'd recommend that you initiate an interim urgency ordinance for a temporary moratorium prohibiting all cannabis activity, so that we would have time to then draft an ordinance for you, consider all the various types of uses you might have in mind, and other regulations that would need to be incorporated into such an ordinance, and return to you when ready. And the third option would be to do nothing. That would simply allow the state law to go into effect, and persons would have to comply, say, businesses, with the limits of state law as they go into effect in January. So, those were three options that we could identify for you to consider. We're asking for your direction on which way you'd like the city staff to go in drafting any regulations that you'd like to see for that. And at this point, that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to try and answer any questions for you.
The first question that comes to mind with me is, I always thought federal law superseded state law. How does this fit with the United States government and federal law?
I'll try my best to answer that question, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Marijuana is still considered federally illegal. The way it works is that certain powers are granted to states, certain powers are reserved to the federal government, and essentially, as long as those two things are not in conflict with one another, the federal government doesn't get involved. And that's generally what the federal government has said through several memos, including one called the Code Memo. And what it has stated was, as long as there's a set list of criterias that states follow, including not allowing access to minors, making sure that money's not being handed to criminal endeavors such as cartels, that the federal government basically looked the other way. So, at this point in time, it is not to say that the federal government has legalized it, they're just kind of taking a hands-off approach, and that's how the states are, if you will, basically getting away with it for now.
Right. Anybody on the council have any questions? If not, I'm going to open up for a public comment at this point. Anyone wants to address the council, please come forward. Normally, we just ask you to keep it under three minutes. If you go to four or five minutes, I'll be okay with that today.
Thank you. I'm going to read it, and I think that would be enough time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on this very serious and important issue. I'm Peter Matthews, a longtime resident of Vacaville. I consider myself to be part of the local mainstream establishment with three university degrees, a long career in public education, beginning as a high school Spanish teacher in San Francisco, and serving my last 10 years as principal in the Fairfield-Sassoon School District. I was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease in 2007. There is no known cure for Parkinson's disease. It is progressive, which means it gets worse as time goes by. As it progresses and the symptoms increase, the treatment is to increase the dosage and/or the type or number of medications taken. My only agenda, as I speak with you, is that of making medical marijuana available and accessible to the increasing number of us who need the very significant relief from pain, extreme discomfort, and often crushing sense of hopelessness of such diseases. I trust that you'll believe me when I tell you that it has done this for me. Legal medical marijuana has relieved the dystonia in my legs to the extent that I can actually sit still and ultimately sleep and stay asleep when nothing else could. Let me emphasize, it has allowed me to get a good night's sleep when nothing else could. It has also greatly eased the number of my most prominent other symptoms: difficulty with balance and walking, the ability to speak normally, the ability to swallow comfortably without choking. You can imagine the relief from the stress and anxiety that this has facilitated. Before even considering trying medical marijuana, my wife Janet and I researched and tried everything we could find in addition to that of, that my neurologist had to offer. This included serious diet and exercise and even meditation. Ironically, I'm much stronger now than I was in 2007, but not so when it comes to walking, eating, relaxing, sleeping, and many of the other symptoms. When a neurologist prescribed a medication to help me sleep, and we read all the terrifying possible side effects of its use, it really hit us how limited were the options our doctors sometimes have to offer. It was then, for the first time, that we decided to try medical marijuana. Again, the relief was nothing short of dramatic. I didn't have to stand just to watch TV or eat. I slept through the night without having to jump out of bed to ease the cramps in my legs. I woke up refreshed and encouraged. Overall, our world is changing, our whole world is changing. A few years ago, I wouldn't have imagined I could be standing here tonight, appealing to you to keep an open mind as you consider allowing the sale of medical marijuana in this city. I am speaking of medical marijuana as an addition to the medicine and treatment we get from our skilled, caring, and dedicated medical doctors, not in place of it. We now have so much ongoing, serious, promising research and study of medical properties and uses of marijuana. This has brought home to us, this was brought home to us much more dramatically when Janet, a longtime teacher in this community, was diagnosed with advanced ovarian cancer July 2nd of 2016. She was given a 13% chance of survival. She went through extensive surgery on July 12th of 16, and then 18 weeks of chemotherapy concluded just before New Year's 2017. I'm almost finished. This aggressive treatment was supplemented separately and on our own by a carefully-planned regimen of cannabis, CBD, and THC oils, which dramatically assisted her during this very difficult time. Remember, Janet was initially given a 13% chance of survival. Look at her today. So, as you deliberate this critically important issue for all of us in this community, please consider how much many others out there, some of whom may well be your own family or friends, who may find very significant comfort and relief from the tremendous effects of Parkinson's disease and so many other medical conditions. As a former long-term mediator for the Solano County Bar Association, I have an appreciation of the challenges you face in reaching a compromise. That addresses the legitimate concerns of the overall community, as well as the critical medical needs of so many others like Janet and me. Thank you for both of us.
Thank you. And thank you, sir, for coming forward. Councilman Hunt?
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize and honor your service. You were my son's principal.
Yes, I remember I worked with you in Fairfield District.
Okay.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. This is my son David, who is helping me and Janet, and our daughter-in-law Amy. And David's going to give some copies of what I just read.
Yeah. Give it to the city clerk over there, that'd be great.
My name is Jessica Demas. I am here today to speak on behalf of the Drug and Alcohol Prevention Coalition, AWARE. I am a freshman at Vacahay, and I'm here because I believe that allowing cannabis stores, commercial cultivation, deliveries, and personal growth can have a negative impact on youth. Right now, it's easy for youth to have access to marijuana, but by allowing cannabis activities to take place in Vacaville, it will make it easier for youth to access it, and it will increase the use of marijuana in youth. In data from 2013 to 2014, of the 10 states with the highest rates of past month marijuana use among youth ages 12 to 17, five were states that had legalized commercial marijuana. The other five states had medical marijuana programs. According to the California Healthy Kids Survey that I took in school year 2015-2016, 19% of 11th graders had reported using marijuana in the past 30 days. While alcohol is the most used substance among youth, marijuana comes in second. If cannabis businesses are to come to Vacaville, it will be easier to expose young kids to marijuana. I would like to see less use of marijuana and that Vacaville remain free from all types of cannabis retail. I admire the medical marijuana regulations that were put in place by city council in 2016. These regulations support the health and well-being of our community. Please keep in mind the health of the community when considering regulations for recreational marijuana. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council members. My name is Monica Alvarez. I am also a member of the Drug and Alcohol Prevention Coalition, AWARE. I am a sophomore at Vacaville High School, and I'm here because marijuana is a substance that teens and youth can access easily. There are many youths that have been, that have become addicted to marijuana and the chemical content of THC, which has made them dependent and are always seeking ways to get more. There are other harms as well that sometimes we don't necessarily think about. Growing marijuana can lead to people wanting to steal it. Deaths, armed robberies, and other types of violence are often the result of possession and cultivation of marijuana. Another issue with marijuana activities is that it can produce a strong odor that can be detected from far away. I used to live in apartments where someone was cultivating and using marijuana. It was a strong smelly odor that even caused me really bad headaches. This may become an issue if we allow cultivation of marijuana because neighbors can complain. Outdoor cultivation sites can result in serious harm to the environment, which includes the use of toxic chemicals that pollute both the land and waterways and harm the wildlife. Indoor cultivation also has many issues. One is that the excessive use of electricity can cause the risk of fire from the electrical systems, not only harming them but also their neighbors. I want to thank you for considering the impact that marijuana-related activities can have in our community.
Thank you.
So, I really don't have a dog in this fight. I genuinely don't care. I don't have kids, so I, the couple of things that I will say, these regulations will not prohibit people from growing personal use in their home, for whatever reason, so that you've taken that out. If there are no regulations, then it's like unregulated alcohol. Quite frankly, a little bit dangerous, and probably black market is a little bit easier to get. The third thing that I will mention is that if you have shops that actually do different things, you don't actually have the problem of the smoke because a lot of people will do other ways of having the THC, so that don't actually include smoke. So, I don't necessarily know that I am super inclined to be like, yeah, go weed stores, but I also know that without regulation, we're just leaving it up to whoever feels like making a profit off of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to close the public comment at this point, and Councilman Relat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't believe that nine years ago, when I was elected to this council, that we would ever be talking about this. I've been a strong voice against it. I've been thankful that this council has always backed me with moratoriums, but now the state of California spoke, and I think we also do need to regulate it. I'm going to be in favor of some regulation, but I want to be very specific on what we're going to do, and I want to keep the moratorium in place until we have everything ready. Because, like Councilmember Hunt, I sit on the League of Cities too, and we've had multiple meetings about this situation, and the state of California is not ready for it. And if the state of California is not ready for it, I guarantee the city of Vacaville is not ready for it. I know that we're doing the best job we can, and I would like to keep the moratorium on it until we establish something through the state and then be able to establish something through the city. However, I would like to see some kind of regulation, and not just medical. And although we had someone come down here with medical tonight, I don't believe that the majority of it is medical right now. And I know there's money to be made out there for the city of Vacaville by doing both sides, recreation and medical, but I would like to see us limit maybe to two businesses, one on the 887, I mean, 88 side and one on the 87 side, and then keep a moratorium on it. I don't want to see it on every street corner. I would like to see it mostly just out in the industrial areas. I don't want to see it in town. I would like to see, because the city of Fairfield, city of Vallejo has got it up and running right now, but the city of Fairfield is talking about it. City of Dixon, I think, has passed ordinances already, so we can't stop it. So, if there's money to be made out there for the city of Vacaville, I would like to be a part of that. And I know that when I talk to the council members in the other cities, they've been bombarded by outsourced companies that are coming in through LA and through Colorado and Washington, and I don't want to see that. If we can give a priority to someone that lives here, that's invested in the community, someone that maybe already owns a business in this community, I'd like to see them have priority on if we're going to have two permits. Like I said, I'd like to see them have permits, priority on their permits. I also would like to not give it to the same owner. Like, if we have two permits only in Vacaville, I'd like to see two separate people get it so there's not a monopoly on it. And I do, I don't know if this is going to be part of it, but the personal growth, I still want to keep it indoor only. I don't know if we can still mandate that. I think that's what you said, but I'd like to see that come back and keep that. We had too many people over the years come and complain about the odor, and I don't want to see it outside on personal residence. There's so many different things that we can do. We talked about manufacturing, distributing, there's a bunch of them in there. I would like to make sure that we're staying close to what makes the best money for Vacaville. I would rather not grow it here in Vacaville. I don't want to see grow houses in Vacaville. If we're going to, I guess, distribute it or sell it as like a retail, I'd be okay with that. But I would like to see, when you guys come back to us, I would like to see something along the lines of what's in it for Vacaville, if we're going to allow this. And I would love to see our chief, Chief Carley, come and tell us what the impacts of having these retail chains in Vacaville will do to our bottom line, our general fund, when we're trying to police our streets with this too. And I believe, there's a million probably different things, but that's the just of what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Councilman Mesper?
All right. Thank you for that, Councilman Relat. I'm going to try and get a little bit more down in the weeds. I have some questions on some things, and then I have my thoughts and where I would like to see things go. The first is that I feel that one of the areas where we have the greatest level of vulnerability, you know, with me, it's a law and order thing. So, one of those areas where we have the greatest issues with public safety with regard to the new legislation and the use of marijuana is at the consumer level. When I say that, what I mean is, in the resale shops, there's the potential, every shop is not going to be great. There are some shops that are absolutely professionally run, and they toe the line on the law, but there is the potential there for those instances to occur. We just had a shoulder tap on alcohol in Vacaville. Four people were arrested, right, for the purchase of alcohol for minors. There's the potential for those issues with the law and public safety to occur at the dispensary level. So, I don't feel personally that we should be authorizing a dispensary within the city. We still have the availability of medical marijuana through this law to be delivered directly to your home. We cannot regulate delivery of marijuana on a city street for the purposes of medical marijuana or any other product that's a derivative of marijuana for medical purposes to an individual. It's still available to those individuals out within the community, and they can still, if I understand it correctly, produce that marijuana within their home. So, that way, we are not limiting those individuals who may not be able to afford to have it delivered. They could still produce marijuana within their home for purposes of medical use, because we can't really regulate inside the home with regard to a non-medical use, right? They're still allowed to have up to six plants for a non-medical purpose?
That is correct. If the city still chose not to regulate it-
So, we should still, we should mirror that regulation for the purposes of medical marijuana. If that's what it says for the personal consumption, then it should mirror the use indoors for medical marijuana, by my perspective. But I still do not see the need for an actual dispensary within the city limits of Vacaville. That said- That said, um, I, my other question, which is the real down on the weeds question, is is there a way that through the municipal code, building code, or other regulatory means, we can, one, require permits for personal consumption or production of medical marijuana within a home? In other words, we want to know, we don't mind that you're doing it because the law says you can, but we want to know you're doing it within the city limits and which houses are going to be doing that. And I have a, a public safety purpose for that. You heard the young ladies speak earlier about robberies at homes, at fires at homes, issues with the power and the diversion of power at homes where marijuana is being produced. If we have permits for those homes, we know those locations, so when we travel, when our fire department goes to a home, because there's a fire, we know that there's a potential for there to be fertilizers within that home that may be combustible or even explosive. We know that there's the potential for there to be an issue with the power at that home so that we're not putting our, our, their neighbors or, uh, sit, other citizens in danger or our personnel, should they have to respond. We know that if there's a home invasion in the neighborhood in that home, that there is a likelihood that it's, that they're there for that particular purpose. Is there a way for us to regulate through the fire code that if they are going to have that type of production within the home, someone who's going to grow 30 plants because they are allowed to produce marijuana, they're a caregiver, and they can produce marijuana for five other people, they have 30 plants in their homes? I don't know that folks all realize, these plants can be over six feet tall. These plants can be as big around as that podium, 30 of those inside a home. And they're going to take up a large portion of that home. They're going to require grow lights, they're going to require water, they're going to require fertilizer. We may need to permit that. There may be a requirement for the building code and for the fire code that we have a specific inspection done to make sure that everything is installed correctly in that home. And so my question to staff is, can we require those permits? And can we require those fire regulations, um, and, and/or, uh, building regulations to, to protect our citizens, every citizen, and to protect, uh, our staff? That said, I'm also not in favor of an outdoor grow for multiple reasons, uh, as was stated earlier. The other reason is because we just heard someone ask earlier about more dense housing. If you live in an apartment complex with a hundred other residents and 30 of those residents are growing five or six plants that size on their patio, the size of this dais, that could cause a significant issue for the other residents in that area without, um, some form of regulation. So I don't see that an outdoor, uh, grow would be beneficial to all the citizens of the city, and I wouldn't be in support of that. Now, onto my, my next piece. When we talk about, um, facilities, I already stated that I'm not in favor of a dispensary. That does not mean that I would not necessarily be in favor of, in our industrial areas or in a non-commercial but industrial or business use area of a business that was connected through, um, production, connected through, um, research, or a business office for the production of marijuana. An example, we have multiple pharmaceutical companies right now in Vacaville, Genentech, Alza, innumerable, who produce drugs. We have companies in Vacaville, we just, we just approved breweries in Vacaville that are going to produce alcohol in our industrial areas for, for, um, production and for sale throughout the state. I would not have a problem with having another company to produce basically a consumable drug for production throughout the state. I'd rather see us reckon, uh, realize a revenue benefit to the city of Vacaville and the county of Solano for the production of that and the dispensing throughout the state, rather than people from Colorado producing it and shipping it here, or LA, growing it there with our water and shipping it here. I'd rather see the citizens of Vacaville realize that benefit, but only in those areas and with, with very specific regulation. Um, we, we regulate the, the production of, uh, and use of water with regard to those types of facilities right now. Um, Genentech, for example, one of our biggest customers for water. Well, think about the production of medical marijuana or, um, commercial marijuana and the hydroponics used and the amount of water that that's going to use for the city. Are they going to become one of our biggest and best water customers if we put that in our industrial park? There are a lot of potential benefits to that, so I would be supportive of that if you can bring us some appropriate regulation to make sure that it is only for those purposes, not for dispensation at the consumer level. I guess that's it, Mr. Mayor. I'm done.
Well, that's, uh, pretty comprehensive. I'm really pleased to see a lot of thought been done on this thing by both of you so far. And Councilman Hunt.
Yeah, this is an interesting, um, conversation. I, first of all, the no action response is not acceptable because I don't want to let the state regulate what we're going to do, and it doesn't make any sense for us to just say, okay, just, you know, go what you want to do. Uh, and I concur with the current, you know, you're allowed to grow six plants right now per household, and I concur that that absolutely has to be an indoor operation. One of the concerns is that you have, you have to be 21 to grow the plants, so I don't know how that's going to work when mom and dad are growing the plants. I guess it'd work, just like you had a six pack of beer in the refrigerator, you know, it's mom and dad's, I guess it would work like that. Uh, the other concern I have right now is the state's pretty confused about the taxation ability of medical marijuana versus recreational marijuana. And right now, the medical marijuana is tax exempt. So from a perspective and economic development for us, uh, the medical marijuana is tax exempt and the recreational marijuana can be taxed. Some cities have tried to use excise tax and some of the other ways to generate that. Uh, so I, I think that needs to be resolved because frankly, why would you go buy recreational marijuana if you have to pay taxes and you can go buy medical marijuana pretty easily with a card? So I think that needs to be resolved from an economic point of view. Interestingly enough, I've softened my position. Um, I, I did not vote for Prop 64, but Prop 64 passed. And, uh, there is a, you know, there is a position in the state of California that we're going to move along the lines of Colorado, Oregon, Washington, and so forth, and marijuana is, can, all consideration is legal. So I'm inclined to agree with the need to have a dispensary, and I would be willing to talk about a dispensary. I'd be willing to, to, um, identify a location, maybe one in the eight-seven, maybe one in the eight-eight. Uh, I would not want the dispensary to be anywhere near schools, so I'd regulate the dispensary to be in an industrial area. I would not want it anywhere. I would regulate the licensing. I, I agree with, um, Councilman Rolet that there shouldn't be the same person. I wouldn't want to see a big company. I would regulate the hours of operation. I wouldn't want it open late at night. I'd regulate the required security, perhaps 24-hour security as approved by the police department. All the licensing has to be done by police department. No window advertising or promoting using the products, so I'd want to see some regulations around that. Um, maybe we could have a, one medical dispensary on one side of town and maybe a recreational dispensary on the other. Um, I'd want to set a realistic tax because if you put a 65% tax on it, it's just going to take it underground and nobody's going to pay that kind of taxes. So I think you need to have a realistic tax, but I could see us having a dispensary in Vacaville. I could see us having a, I, I would also want the dispensary to have a temporary license with reviews, maybe quarterly and, and with a real quick way to get rid of them, and uh, if it's not working, if we're finding it isn't working, that we have some revocation language in whatever we come up with. But certainly, uh, you know, I've softened a little bit. I guess a year ago, I probably wouldn't have said that. Two years ago, I definitely wouldn't have, but the fact is it's here. Dixon's going to have one, Vallejo's got, got five or six. I don't know how many they have, but to, to say that Vacaville, we don't, we're not going to just, you know, we're not going to have a dispensary, that just doesn't make a lot of sense, uh, in today's climate. And, you know, it's not something that I would personally approve of, but I think as a representative of the city and of the taxpayers, if there's some opportunity to gain some revenue and to, and in a medical situation, help some of our citizens, that, that certainly makes some sense. So I'd be, I'd be supportive of some sort of language towards a dispensary.
Well, that's been said, and, uh, I've read this thing three times now, and every time I read it, I can't believe I'm reading about marijuana coming to the state of California or to the city of Vacaville in particular. And, uh, I really would like to call it chief, uh, Chief Carley, would you want to come up to the podium and, uh, give us a little take on your opinion about it, uh, before I state my opinion? I'm going to hold you to anything you say here.
No, good evening, Mayor, and it is an interesting conversation. I think it's as surprising to me as it is to, to all of you as well. My entire career has been, um, through looking out into the best interest of a community through devices that we live by. You know, marijuana is a drug that's regulated by the, the federal government. We continue even within this week doing search warrants, arresting individuals who are into the sales and distribution of marijuana. And so this, this issue of crime isn't going to go away, and whether it's underground or it's legalized, it's going to continue because it's a sought-after drug and so many people are using it. So the challenge really is, is this something that as a community, we're going to just acquiesce to the challenges that we face? Do we regulate it in a way that makes it sustainable? We certainly know the medical uses that are there. I wouldn't, uh, believe that, that most police agencies are, when you're looking at from a safety and security standpoint, like the story we heard earlier, it's, there's legitimate uses. We, we have pharmaceuticals, we have no problems talking about those when it's done in a responsible way. The challenge is how to differentiate between what is responsible and what's not. I agree that this idea that if, if there's, um, if you drive it into a black market, it's going to be sold there because it's everywhere. The prisons are filled with inmates that are drug and alcohol addicted, so it's a difficult thing to put your finger on, but we deal with it every day, and whether we regulate it or not, we're arresting people every day for drugs. And marijuana is one of those that's, that seems to be, um, not the drug of our youth. It's so much more potent today, and we're dealing with other things that are stronger. But it is nonetheless a, a classified drug at the federal level, so, you know, it's one of those, we're going to come across it every day, whether it's a car full of kids or it's, it's organized gangs or criminals. So the idea of, of our response won't change. I think it's the behavior that, that's, uh, that we're dealing with and how, how one car stop might be packaged for sales. And is it going to come from a local dispensary? Maybe, maybe not. But it certainly is a, a change in our culture here in California, very, very different than the federal level.
The things that concerns me is, of course, uh, somebody who is pretty high and is driving down the road. Now, do we have any measurement standard that says you've, you're overdosed or, you know, kind of like alcohol, .8?
Currently, there is no measuring, uh, instrument that will allow that. That's been the challenge in Colorado. Uh, and the, the state of Colorado has certainly reached out to law enforcement in California trying to explain what you're really opening up yourself to. The state's already opened itself up, you know, the vote is in, so whether it, it's coming from within Vacaville or if it's coming through Solano County, it's here, and it's, it's, it's difficult for me to accept, but, but the reality is, is, um, there is no instrument. I believe that there will be soon, just because the impact, California is a very large state and with so much, um, when you consider the size of Colorado, that that's going to be the next instrument that will be designed. But as of right now, there's no way of knowing throughout, unless there's a blood draw, whether or not somebody is intoxicated.
All right, and, uh, no questions to the chief? Thank you very much. Curtis?
You asked a question on the chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, you know, I have, uh, I think you, the three of you have covered the waterfront pretty much on, uh, on, on drugs and how you feel about it, and I guess we are stuck in that mode of having to accept some compromise. But I do have concerns outside of what you talked about. I think we think in terms of people smoking marijuana, but I'm concerned about the ingestion of, through food products. How do you regulate that? How, people are going to grow it and, uh, you know, you're going to have a little party for a bunch of kids over and you're beating cookies with weed in it, right? I mean, how are you, how are you going to start controlling all of these things where it's going to be progressing into every facet of your life? And so that's a concern that I have, is that there's going to be ways. You're, we'll be showing up here and somebody have a cookie on here for you, you know? No more cake, no more cookies, uh, and other things. Uh, I, I kind of agree with most everything that you've all said. I think it's here. It's a reality. How do you control it and how do you regulate it? How do you inspect for it? Do we get permits? Are we going to have permission to go into people's houses and make sure they only have six plants, or how are we going to do that? Is there, uh, through the legal channels here, David, what do you think? Is there some way that we're going to be able to control, uh, the permitting process in some way where we have inspections and we have annual walkthroughs like the fire department does in businesses where they're looking for any violations of the fire codes? Is there going to be some, something that we can do? Or are we going to be prohibited from going into people's houses?
Well, uh, to some extent, the law, uh, as currently written, does allow some mechanisms for inspections, particularly with, uh, indoor/outdoor cultivations by persons and entities for fire standards, uh, but, uh, it isn't entirely clear, and so we can certainly look into that more and get you more information regarding that. But even as now, the state is also trying to figure some things out, and they haven't really issued any kind of, uh...
And then what are, what are the penalties if you grow 10 plants instead of six? I mean, what, are we going to, is it a misdemeanor? We don't even prosecute misdemeanors hardly anymore. I say we, I'm talking about the county. So, you know, how do we, how do we, uh, how do we take care of the fact that people are not obeying the law and obeying the rules and limitations? You know, is there some way to do that? Or are we just spinning our wheels and it's just going to happen and overcome us because everybody's going to do it and there's no, no control? We've, we've seen that in so many other areas of the law today where people aren't paying attention to the law. Uh, you know? I see people going down my street 70 miles an hour and nobody, nobody stops them because there's not enough cops that are out there to be able to do it. So people don't obey the laws, even traffic rules, and they're not going to certainly obey them when it comes to marijuana. So I have a hard time saying anything. I, obviously, D, or C, the third option, is, is not something that any of us support in that. There's no way we can do that. We have to have some control of what we're doing. Uh, certainly, I think, uh, I agree, the other three people have said, be indoor growing only, you know, nothing outdoors. Uh, we'll be starting to steal from each other, I guess. Beyond that, as far as dispensaries go, I think you need to, we need to take a look at it, how it's, how it's working. Maybe we've got to take a look at Colorado and see what they're doing, if there are any pushbacks now after it's been around for a long time. I have friends who live in Monument, Colorado, and he tells me it's horrible, and that it's a, you know, he's afraid to go out at night for fear that somebody's going to run into him just a little high because there's no way to stop him. And, uh, I don't know, I don't know the effects of it. I've never used marijuana, and I'm sure there's a lot more people who are military retirees that never use it either, so I'm not familiar with it. Uh, I had a, I had a nephew once who, who had AIDS, and he used marijuana and it didn't work for him. So I don't, that's all I know about, about that drug. But, uh, so I'm, I'm okay with trying to put the compilation of what everybody said here to, uh, sort of use and take a hard look at it. I think the moratorium needs to stay in effect until, uh, we do come up with a resolution. And, uh, if you can make sense out of what everybody said, I, I think, uh, we, you know, I think Councilman Hunt hit the nail on the head when he said, uh, you know, we're acquiescing to it. We, we don't want to do it, but that's where we are. And, uh, but I think the young ladies that came up here, I want to applaud you for coming forward from high school and, and stating your opinions. Unfortunately, I wish you'd gone to the, the legislature up in Sacramento and been able to get them to consider what they did, but they haven't done very, very good over the past 15 years, I can tell you. So I, I wouldn't expect anything better out of them. I haven't said that, I'm sorry to say. That's the direction you got, it's, uh, try to contain it as much as you can, but allow some use. I think the gentleman who came up and spoke eloquently, I want to thank you, sir, for coming forward and stating your opinion. Certainly, I think, uh, it works for you, and that's probably a good thing, so.
And if you want to talk further about it, you can talk to me.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right. Anything else?
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse, excuse me. If I may, currently, the only moratorium that's in effect is the moratorium for, um, personal medical, uh, cultivation.
So when you...
So you, so if you'd like to impose a moratorium for the rest of the uses and, um, personal recreational outdoor or any, uh, personal outdoor cultivation, I'd suggest that you initiate an interim, uh, ordinance, initiate that and have the direct staff to bring back, um, the moratorium, and then we'll follow that process.
Okay. Can you do that for the next meeting? And it's going to be a full meeting, I think, next time. Mr. City Manager, can you handle that?
I'm not sure we'll get it back at the next meeting, but we can definitely get it, um, before January 1st.
Right. We'll get it...
Before October.
We're going to get it back to the agenda as soon as possible.
Okay.
Did you budge into the vote on that?
No. This is your direction. So let me bring that back. Uh, thank you, folks, for, for attending and being polite. Appreciate your attendance.